Good evening, Winthrop. And welcome to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of October 5th, 2021. We are meeting live in the Harvey Hearing Room at Town Hall. This meeting is also being shown on WCAT Live and being taped for further showings throughout the week. We have a Zoom number to call in if you want to join by Zoom. The Zoom number is 1-301-715-8592 with an ID number of 841-811-98146. So be free to join us for the public comment and any public hearings we may have. Okay, would you please take a roll call, Denise?
Counselor Jero. Counselor Plakat.
Here.
Counselor DiMarco.
Here.
Counselor Terry.
Yep.
Counselor Honan.
Here.
Counselor LaConte. Counselor Farino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you all please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance? And Counselor Farino, would you lead us in the name of the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting is now called to order. Can I have a motion on the minutes of the September 21st, 2021, meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor DiMarco.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Honan. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Is there any additions? Are there any deletions? Having none, all those in favor excepting the minutes, please signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counselor Jero.
Yes.
Counselor Plakat, yes. Counselor DiMarco.
Yes.
Counselor Terry.
Yes.
Counselor Honan.
Yes.
Counselor LaConte. Counselor Farino.
Here.
Vice President Christopher.
Yeah.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we now have a very special general information, and I'm so happy to see so many people here to help us honor a great man who is going to become our new Fire Chief. So I'm going to turn it over to the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, everyone, for coming. You know, actually, it was two weeks ago now that I announced I would appoint Captain Wiley to Acting Chief. He's certainly well-deserving. He's carried Chief Flanagan for the last many years. Who recently retired, so we appreciate the retired chief for coming out for this momentous occasion. It's well-deserved, and thank you to the firefighters in the Capitol, the lieutenants that are out there here to support the new chief. And certainly, you know, I think he's well-suited, well-fitted, and has all the knowledge necessary to carry the department forward. So without further ado, I'd like to invite the chief to come up. Let the clerks swear him in, and please, any family members you want to come up with you, chief, and then after, give the chief an opportunity to say a few words.
Here.
You raise your hand here, please. Aye, Scott Wiley.
Aye, Scott Wiley.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Of America and the state of Massachusetts.
Of America and the state of Massachusetts.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, both foreign and domestic.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as chief of the Winthrop Fire Department.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as chief of the Winthrop Fire Department.
Under the appointment of the department, according to the laws of the state of Massachusetts, to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God.
Under the appointment of the department, according to the laws of the state of Massachusetts, to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God.
And now sworn in, certain congratulations.
Scott.
And if we could just have the signatures here. The big book wants this assigned, there's no turning back. Congratulations, Chief Wiley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Scott, congratulations.
Thank you.
It's fantastic, and I appreciate all the work you did with the AOC over the pandemic. You were there every day. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we take a five-minute recess or do you taste?
Let's the chief say a few words.
Oh, yes, sure.
You look really good naked. I'll put that right here. You want to stand here with me? I thank you, everyone. Counsel President Boncory, Vice President Christopher, members of the Town Council, Mr. Manager. Before I begin, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge some very important people in my life that I'm pleased were able to meet. Saint John. My grandson Roman, my brother John, my mother, Diane's mother Doris, my fabulous girlfriend Diane, my sister Susan, Diane's daughter Eva, my very special daughter Christina, my family at home, my sister in Florida, my nephew Christopher, Lieutenant of the Linfield Fire Department, and his girlfriend Tiffany. The Winthrop Fire Department has a long history, going back well over 100 years. For most of that time, the department was run by civilian ordered fire engineers. In fact, there have only been six chiefs prior to me: Chief Ed Haisler, Chief Charles Flanagan, Chief David Higgins-Martham, Chief Paul Ford, Chief Larry Powers, and most recently, Chief Paul Flanagan. Each of these men leaving their own unique legacy on this department in one form or fashion. I hope to do the same. I'd like to take a few moments to directly address the members of the Winthrop Fire Department. First, I'd like to publicly express my appreciation for the job that you do every day. I have been a proud member of this department for over 30 years, but never more so than in the last 18 months. During the early stages of the pandemic, when they were far more unknowns than knowns, when guidances and directives, policies and procedures were changing day by day, when what was okay on Monday was not okay on Tuesday, you continued to do your job. You accepted and adapted to change and continue to deliver outstanding service to this community. Along with dealing with the pandemic, you responded to thousands of other calls to service with untold professionalism. In the various positions I've held within this department, I've always tried to lead by example, and I will continue to do that as your chief. The position of chief of department holds many duties and responsibilities, the most important of which is my responsibility to put you in the best possible position to do your job safely and efficiently. I will advocate for you, and to that end, I will seek out funding sources for staffing, state-of-the-art equipment, personal protective equipment, training opportunities, and hopefully someday, very soon, a new facility to operate out of. To the residents of the town of Winthrop, you have an outstanding young fire department. My job, along with the command staff, is to make them better, and we will work to be a better fire department today than we were yesterday, and a better fire department tomorrow than we are today. You deserve nothing less. In closing, I'd like to say thank you, Counsel President Boncory, Vice President Christopher, members of the Town Council, Mr. Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this department in this capacity, and thank you for the opportunity to serve this community.
Do we have recess?
Yes. We will now be in recess for five minutes. We're going to take some pictures, and I'm sure your family doesn't want to stay for the whole meeting. All right, moving forward, that was exciting, and congratulations to Chief Scott Wiley. On for public hearings, there are no public hearings today. We'll now open it up for public comment. Anybody in the audience have any public comment? Karen?
Hi, Karen, Charles Presley, true. First of all, I want to know what's going on with the ferry. After reading in the paper over the weekend that East Boston has started a ferry and are only charging $5 to go from Lewis Wharf, I believe, to the Seaport. I don't know, that might be the aquarium. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. And I know the letter that came from the interim CFO to the Town Council via the Town Manager did recommend that we do away with the ferry, so that's one thing. The other thing is, I think, I don't think I know. There's been absolutely no discussion until tonight about a new public safety building. I just want to know where that stands. Has it gone back to the architects to ask if a possibility of the middle school site is feasible? If not, that's fine, but I think we asked for that to happen. The other thing is, I see on the agenda you have the vote tonight. Are you going to vote tonight on whether we're going to participate in the vocational?
Yes, we are.
Now, I understood, I got some correspondence today from Rob O'Dwyer that gives what the cost will be to Winthrop. I also, there was also an email from the superintendent, I believe his name is?
DeBarry.
To Mr. Barry. Who said that we could not, we do not have to vote yes. We can just leave it, and that's like an automatic yes. But it could end up going out to vote per town, and in order for it to pass, it would have to be 50%, which is six cities and towns plus one, in order for it to pass. If we do vote no and continue to vote no and it passes, we are still responsible. Am I saying anything wrong?
Nope.
Please correct me.
Nope, that's by statute. That's exactly how it goes.
Okay. You know, I looked at it quickly. I looked at what it's going to cost. It looks like the town of Winthrop is going to be in debt for almost $8 million. It's $7,856,777, which will be a cost to us for 30 years of $261,842, which is a lot of money. And I'm not pleased. There isn't anybody who respects vocational education more than me. I had two grandchildren go to vote, not to the vote, but they went to Essex Tech, and both of them, one of them went on to college and bought a bachelor's in veterinary technology because of what she had, and the other one, who was into landscape and landscape design, although he does work for National Grid Gas now, he does still do that on the side until he got on to National Grid. So I'm not downing it. I'm just wanting everybody to think it out, be sure, and let's do the right thing.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to speak in public comment?
Yes.
If not, I see you have some hands up.
Yeah, Mr. Jack Dowd had his hands up first. Mr. Dowd, if you want to go ahead and unmute yourself.
Jack?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, Jack.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
He's... I don't think so. I'm trying to tell him, depending on the point of time, depending upon... The city is looking at the infrastructure, right? The setting is just...
I hear a word.
Jack, you get feedback, so we're not hearing you. Do you have two devices on at the same time?
I know he was saying something about my name.
We have the same problem, Jack. You're echoing. I think he said he called back. Okay.
All right. Let him call back. Who's the next one?
Mr. Malios, Facili Malios.
Facili, are you there?
Hey, guys, can everyone hear me?
Yeah, Facili, you're coming in clear.
Thanks, guys. Good evening, everyone. So I think the construction work going on for the CBD has been fantastic. The job that these, the contracts have done on Somerset have been, they've been awesome. One concern that I do have is on Pleasant Street. I see multiple families trying to cross that road, and there is no signage there. I would make a suggestion to the council that they consider possibly looking at the not stop signs, but the crosswalk signs that light up, so that we do have a safe way to get to the center and promote walking and, you know, outdoor transportation like that. So just a suggestion, the stop, not the stop signs, excuse me, the sidewalk signs like at Orion Heights, the ones that flash when you press the button, just think about that. It would promote a really safe travel from outside of the center to get people down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Facili. Next.
We have guys. Julia Wallace?
Hi, Julia, you're on.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Sorry, I meant to come in person, but, you know, like happens, so thank goodness for Zoom. This is good timing. I came calling up, I'll just pick up where the last caller left off about these safety improvements, street improvements in the center, and just wanted to add, you know, publicly encourage you all to please, you know, support our town's efforts to take advantage of the enormous amounts of state funding and grant programs there are to install things like flashing crosswalk signs, raised crosswalks, mini rotaries, all these things, where they could dramatic improvement in the walkability and street safety in our, in our community. I know there's no such thing as free money, and if you get a grant, you know, you have to spend it, and you have to use staff time, but, you know, I want you to really seriously consider that the cost of doing nothing is much higher than the cost of pursuing free money, grant money from institutions like Mastod. Who's really eager to give out money to communities like us who otherwise maybe couldn't afford to do some of these improvements, just to make our town a safer place. You know, we've had some really upsetting incidents later on recently on our streets, and it's dangerous for children, for the elderly, for our most vulnerable, and really low-cost improvements can yield really high impact in terms of benefits. So I really hope that doesn't go overlooked, you know, just only focus on really the big, heavy-hitting projects, which are also super important, like the CBD, infrastructure and drainage. There's a lot of low-hanging fruit, and I don't want us to lose sight of that and take advantage of these funding programs to make them happen and to make them affordable, to make our community a safer place for everyone. So thanks for considering that.
Thank you, Julia. Anyone else? Sure. Who up?
Good evening. Bob Carroll, Presley, six. Good evening, Town Council President Boncory and members of the Town Council. I watched the interim financial director, and I don't know his last name, Cirillo?
Cirillo, yes. Steve.
Steve. Budget report in September's meeting. I was surprised and disappointed at what I heard about proposed, being proposed regarding grant funding. My takeaway from his presentation was that grants were somehow bad and that we, as a community, must prioritize their elimination. He gave two examples of this. First, he suggested that grants that support approximately 4% of the annual school budget be eliminated. Why? How? It's about $900,000 in his report. That's a lot of money that would directly impact Winthrop taxpayers' pockets, and then without impacting their pockets, would require educational service cuts to our kids. That would be really unfortunate. This is a town that has already challenged to maintain current program levels, as you know, each year when you're talking about the budgets, and many folks don't even know that this town had to already make cuts long ago, like the band. The town has no band. There are folks in town trying to get it back together again. So at any level in Winthrop, middle school, high school, there's no band, and it's because of things like that. So grant funding is really important to support our schools. Second, and with all difference too, the second example was funding for the ferry, and that that grant funding was somehow bad. The ferry is an enterprise fund, and as it's been explained to me, is a sort of self-sustaining kind of bucket within the larger structure and budget of the town, and has not, because it's an enterprise fund, has not received any dollars of support since 2019 from Winthrop taxpayers. And the ferry, like all transportation, relies on subsidies to exist and uses a combination of funding from the state and federal authorities, the city of Quincy, and the Boston Seaport to balance its books. And, you know, it's a very challenging time. Ridership is down, most people are still able to work from home, so the ticket sales have absolutely been lower, but I still think it's in, someone can correct me, that it's with that grant money, and lots of it, it's still not going to hit Winthrop's taxes. So why wouldn't we want amenities which cost Winthrop taxpayers nothing? So, you know, even if your job or schedule doesn't allow you to commute on the ferry, you should still support the ferry because it takes a number of cars off the road every morning during rush hour each day. This will become even more critical as more people return to work and the developments for 2,000 housing units show up at Suffolk Downs. So it's only going to clog the two ways out of town even more. So my point is, Winthrop cannot afford to say no to free money. That might be possible for other towns like Brookline to be able to do, but we just not have the tax base or the business base to do so. So if we leave federal grant money on the table or state grant money on the table, our taxes won't get any lower. That money's going to another community. That money is going to go to Pittsburgh or Springfield or whoever, whoever asks for the money. So we just need to be making the case and continuing to make it. So the economic realities of Winthrop require our leaders to seek grant funding from multiple sources, to provide the best services possible for our citizens, especially our children. And I urge you to continue to seek these grants requests and to keep Winthrop moving forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bob. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize you with your mask on, too. You stood up and took it off. Thank you for everything you do for us on the planning board. Appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else that, online? No? I don't see any other hands up?
No.
All right, moving on. Do you have correspondence? Denise, did you have one?
Correspondence?
Yeah, nope.
Nope.
Okay.
Didn't receive any.
Moving on, committee reports. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met this evening at 5:30. We had four items on the agenda, three in terms of motion and one in terms of discussion on, continued discussion on trash. The three motions, which we will go over in old business, one was to appropriate $90,000 from the Fund Balance Reserve of Overlay Surplus Account to assess this consulting line. This is something that when we were going through the budgeting process for fiscal '22, we had taken money away from this line, knowing that we would have to replace it, but we needed to balance the budget. So this was discussed in the Finance Committee, and we have unanimous approval and to go with a positive recommendation on this, and we'll say that in old business. The second item was to appropriate $86,000 for the Dog Park/Golf Shed project. We went over this in detail once again. We looked at the overall cost of the project, which is roughly $510,000 and $540,000. The, we have, we've already approved this, this project that's going forward. It's actually probably 70 to 75% complete at the time, and we knew that there was additional funding. The funding, the original funding that was coming in came from the Millerfield Committee, which put up $275,000. The Winthrop Foundation, which generously put in $100,000 towards the Dog Park. The Town Council voted to match the Winthrop Foundation with a $25,000 match, which accounts for roughly $400,000, which left the balance of about 150. This motion tonight is, was looking for $86,000 to bring that down. We are still looking for potential funds that we think will come from the Millerfield Committee. We just are trying to finish up that project to see what funds are available. So this, this motion, which included several, several small funds, several special articles that had small balances, which accounted for $71,000, and then there was a motion to take $15,000 from the Council Reserve. The Finance Committee is amending the motion to eliminate the $15,000 from Council Reserve. We just feel that we do not want to take money out of savings, we have said it since the beginning, to pay for this project. We know that the project will be paid for. So the motion coming out is going to be amended from $86,000 to $71,000. This will still leave a balance of roughly $80,000 to complete the project. We think that there is potentially anywhere from 25 to 55 coming from the Millerfield Committee, and we will look at the remainder of the cost. There are a couple of variable items left, and we're hoping that they come in a little under cost. This project will be paid for and completed in a timely manner, so that will come also under old business. And there was a motion to appropriate $20,000 from the Town Council Reserve for a search of a town manager. We discussed the cost of the project, the cost of a search committee, how it can be, you know, it could end up being less money than that, it could be in more money than that. The last search we did in 2017, we appropriated more money because we ended up having to go out for two, multiple searches. So this is to get the bar rolling. We did come out with, we made an amendment on this motion also. Again, we did not want to touch the Town Council Reserve at this moment when we were going through the fiscal '22 budget process. We had taken money out of the Council Reserve that was originally appropriated, so that fund only has a balance of $48,000, we're only three months into the year. If we had taken these two motions, it would have gone down to $13,000, and that leaves us very little wiggle room. So what we amended it to was to take $20,000 from the Town Manager Permanent Salary Line item, which does have a sufficient balance in there. I did discuss this before. We had made the motion with the Assistant CFO, who verified the numbers that we had. So the motion will be made, and it was unanimous, to appropriate $20,000. It was just a funding source that was amended from the Town Council Reserve to the Town Manager Permanent Salary Line item. Then we had a joint meeting with Rules and Ordnance.
You're handling that?
I was handling that.
Okay.
And that came, that was at 6:45. We were discussing inspectional service fees. We had Mr. Leggie, as well as Mr. Schmidt, here with us to help us go through all the proposed changes to the fees. After several questions from both committees, we did agree unanimously with the recommendations, and we'll be reporting that with favorable results. And that is it from Finance this evening.
Thank you. Public Safety, did you have a meeting?
Public Safety Committee did not meet over the last two weeks. However, for information, we received an email with potential funding opportunities for the access road to the Governor Fort Banks School, and I spoke to our planner, Rachel, about them. She does not believe our project will qualify for those opportunities, but will explore other potential sources. She also reported we would need a traffic study and a design to apply for a grant. So she's looking.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Counselor Plakat, there is some designs that have been done and accomplished. They are, they are on the website. This was when Jim McKenna was here. Steve helped me with the name.
Geode Consultants.
The Geode Consultants did, and there was a full traffic study in that packet. It is on our website, under Projects.
Yeah, Projects, Plans and Presentations, and it says Fort Banks Access Road.
Okay.
And if you click on there, you'll see the whole, it's several hundred pages of the traffic study that was done with all the attachments.
With the three options of what you could do down there.
Was the design complete? Would it be satisfactory for an R?
Engineering was not done.
My understanding is the design and permitting were never, were never complete.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on, Town Manager's report.
Good evening, again, congratulating Chief Wiley and also Chief Flanagan on his retirement. We had a great send-off to him last Thursday out in the front, Town Green. It was well-attended, and everyone appreciates his service as well. National Grid started their work on Revers Street. Unfortunately, today, they ran into some problems in working late for.
I noticed.
Counsel DiMarco.
It's right in front of my house.
Losing my report. So one of their contractors hit a main, and they were there repairing the main. They should be clear by 8:00 PM tonight. The Center Business District, myself and Director Calla, as well as our engineers from Woodward and Curran, met with the construction foreman, one of the construction foremen in the Center Business District. We expressed our concerns that the project was running a little bit behind. We didn't feel that they were doing enough curbing and footing per day to get us to where we wanted to be in December. So we had a full, honest discussion with them. I have seen them pick up pace here recently. I discussed that with Director Calla this afternoon. I do check it multiple times a week. I do check it multiple times a week to see where the progress is, um, as well as propoio property, because that's new growth. So I check where that progress is as well, um, trying to get us into new growth, um, as we move forward. Uh, Bartlett Road, um, project, uh, is gonna be in the Central Register, um, to be awarded sometime in the next 60 days.
Yeah, well, you know, yeah, the bid opening, uh, is scheduled for the, uh, it's either the last week in October or the first week in November. And then we'll won that right away.
So that, uh, project is Hoppers qualified. And that's the water, uh, water and sewer, uh, mains over there that Director Calla said would be in failure within a couple of years. So instead of putting that on the rate payer, we were, we decided to do that project through Hoppers. The next, um, topic is the Revere Street TIPS project, um, which I just wanna make, at this point, inform the council, um, what me and Director Calla know on the TIPS project. It's gonna be starting, uh, relatively soon. That's a major up, upgrade. I'll ask Director Calla to, to give us the scope of that in a few minutes. But there's, um, we've been advised by DOT that we have to send out notices of people's property that we might have a temporary or permanent easement on. So there's 70 temporary easements, uh, throughout this project scope. There is one permanent easement. Um, that's on the Winthrop Housing Authority property, the permanent easement. So, um, part of the DOT funding comes from the federal government. Some of the federal government regulations is that we compensate for the taking of a temporary and/or permanent easement. People can gift their easements to the town. There'll be a form that'll be generated through DOT passed on to us. But we, we own the cost of paying for the easement. We own the cost of legal to represent us, to work out those easements, to record the easements and everything else. So there is, you know, a substantial cost. They just did a project in Howell. There was 200 easements. It was $80 a square foot, if I remember correctly from our conversation. And there, that costs the town of Howell about 1.7 million. We're not on the water in Revere Street, so the, you know, square value might be different. But there's an appraisal process that we have to go through to make sure it's fair to us and fair to the homeowner, store owner, um, of the property that we'll crouch upon. Now, even a temporary passage to fix the public sidewalks and maintain our temporary footing on their driveway is a temporary easement is necessary. If it was a state grant instead of funding, the restrictions would've been a little bit lighter. But this is a federal project. We have to follow federal guidelines. Um, you know, I, I don't know what to project out, you know, 70 versus 200, but you can do the math. I'm thinking it's gonna be, you know, somewhere in the $500,000 to $600,000 range. But we won't know. We don't know how many people will be willing to give up their easement as a gift to the town. Um, that may be possible. So I'm just letting you know, we will be coming back, um, for funding. Um, you know, we'll look at other opportunities and where we can probably get matching or, you know, where we can get funding from. But that's on our radar. We're working hard on that. But this is a, um, a $6 million project, um, that will cost us a little bit of money as well. So plus the engineering and stuff that already's been done for the TIPS projects. So I'm just letting, giving you a warning so no one says, stick a shock when they come back and say, hey, we've done the easement process. This is who we have to pay and this is how much we have to pay them if they don't gift the easement. So, um, Steve, did I represent our conversation with DOT?
Absolutely.
Do you have anything you wanna add?
No, I mean, I could certainly go through the project.
Yeah, please, if you don't mind. Let's just do the boundaries of it.
National Grid is doing a lot of this project.
No, no, National Grid's a separate project.
It's a separate project. They have nothing to do.
They're doing, actually, Revere Street by Dunkin' Donuts sooner. We have deadlines for them, so the TIPS project can come in without them being in our way.
So the TIPS project is, is currently programmed for construction in the spring of 2023. Uh, it's a full restoration roadway sidewalks, curbing, um, from McGee's Corner to Crest Ave. Uh, Crest Ave intersection. Both intersections will be fully upgraded with, uh, preemptive warnings and, and, you know, up to, brought up to today's standards of what intersection should be with pedestrian, uh, pedestrian, uh, safety and all of that. Again, full sidewalks, full street, and, uh, there'll be some, some drainage work. It's essential, that's essential. We're at, uh, we're, we're in the final phase of, uh, of design for that project.
Okay, thank you.
The, um, RFP has been submitted through the council president and the clerk to the procurement officer. It'll be advertised in October 11th Gooden Service Bulletin, um, from the state. So, um, contractors will be able to view it and, and bid and send their bids in. Um, so we'll be kept apprised of that, um, from the procurement office, officer to the council clerk and the town clerk. Uh, the old DBW, a lot, a lot of questions lately. So we have, um, auctioned eight vehicles. Six, uh, we have two over there still that just went, just got sold at auction. Um, six have already gone. These two are lingering, so these two will go next. So the process is, we wait, make sure the check cleared, and then they get the vehicle. Um, you know, the, these vehicles are not the best shaped vehicles and, you know, they're going $1,500,000, $500,000, depending on, on the vehicle itself. On October 22nd, Frankie Fabiano Way will be dedicated. That's behind the high school. It's gonna be dedicated to a football game at halftime. Um, I just got the information today, like, and make sure the council knew about it. Invite the council. For, I'm sure Council will, Terry will apprise us on the other, um, grand opening. I don't wanna steal his thunder. Uh, the Greenway Grant, um, we've been doing a lot of research on the Greenway Grant. Rachel and myself, back and forth. So the Bar Foundation will cover, um, a portion of our match. Uh, so $15,000, $18,000 can be in kind, uh, for that grant. So at, at this point, I'm confident that that grant will not cost Winthrop any tax paid in dollars. Um, so I will then go ahead and, and sign the grant and the contract to get that going. So, um, I won't need council approval or funding from the council, um, for that. Middle School Review, so we have three, um, we have two people that submitted bids to be, uh, consultants on the project. I, I have nominated, I asked the Director Calla and our planner and myself to go through those bids and to choose, um, and pick a company. At that point, that those, that name will be sent, who's one and who's two, to the procurement officer, at which time she'll open their bids. Um, that's the 30B process. I just wanna give you an update of where we are with that. Uh, the Fall Fair and Craft Show on October 9th, 11:03 at Ingleside Park. Sean Driscoll asked me to, to, um, mention that. Uh, COVID updates, I'm happy to represent Meredith Hurley. You can give her a night off tonight. Um, so, uh, from the 14th to the 27th, we had 38 cases. Uh, 33.2 were breakthroughs. Between 9/21 and 10/4, we had 24 cases. 30.6% were breakthroughs. 22 residents are currently isolated. Percent positives have decreased from 4.4 last week to 3.14 this week. Uh, vaccinations are, are going well as well. We had, um, additional 147 people vaccinated to bring our total to 12,504, um, which is a very good number. The ferry, I just wanna comment since two other people have commented tonight on the ferry. Um, so the DOT has made it very clear, do not rely on us for funding over the next three years. We wanna plan for Winthrop how it's gonna succeed without DOT funding. DEP funding has never came in this year. Um, we'll put another letter into DEP for next year and see if they respond to that. Um, so giving, given that, we're relying on Quincy and Winthrop to bear the burden on costs for next year. Um, I've talked to DOT on the phone in a conversation. We're gonna get back on the phone again. I'm gonna submit my reports for this year. They will, uh, they wanted a, a week by week and month by month cost analysis on what we're spending and, and what we're bringing in. So Larissa's been helping me with that, gathering that information. You know, regionalization is the way to go here. Uh, I talked to, uh, someone from the Convention Center. Their ferry is, doesn't, doesn't have anyone on it. Uh, there's no, there's no, no sense for two people to have very limited amount of people riding on the ferry going to the same spot. And I think, I think we need to start thinking about regionalization and how we share this cost with our neighbors, uh, in a more regional aspect of it. That's the only way I see it succeeding without DOT and DEP funding. Um, you know, I certainly respect, um, both our speakers here tonight. Um, but I think based on what we knew at the time, the CFO has made a, a financial decision. And his decisions are all based on finance. It's up to you, the board here, the council, to decide what we're gonna do. We can only tell you what, what the finances look like and how it affects us. And then ultimately, this decision has to come down to the council, what we wanna do and how we wanna do it. Um, I, I think there's value in regionalization and especially in a project like this, um, a ferry project. I just wanna, I'm, I know there's no debates, Mr. President, but I just wanna, um, just CFO's report, I might've missed it, but I think what we pointed out is the school department has relied this year on so many grants to balance their budget. That grant money's going away. And we needed to increase her by $300,000 next year to help sustain, and services that you see this year. So that's directly from the, from the superintendent and her business manager, that they're balancing their budget on grants. And we have balanced our budget this year on grants and we tried to outback them out because you'd never wanna balance your budget based, your reoccurring costs based on grants. Because you're gonna feel at some point, you're gonna go off the, off the ledge. And I just wanna make sure that everyone's on, on, you know, on the same page. You know, our CFO and Assistant CFO are num, are numbers people and they keep us on track. Um, you know, Robbie, um, questions me all the time about expenditures and that's their job. Um, and they're doing their job and, and I appreciate their job, but it's up, up to us to make hard decisions, uh, up to the community to make hard decisions. So, um, public safety building, I know was mentioned, uh, you know, here tonight as well. Karen stole my thunder because I was putting it on the, um, Fall Forum, um, as one of the public, uh, service provisions that would need to help provide services as Chief Wiley and Chief Flanagan, we've been hearing this from Chief Flanagan for many years, and Chief Wiley echoed those sentiments again tonight. Um, that will conclude my report, Mr. President, and thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the major, uh, Council of Lockhart?
I, I don't have a question. I just want to express my appreciation and love of the paving of the roads up in the Highlands. And.
Yes.
It was done, I thought, quite efficiently. They were in and out in a day or two. Uh, and it's just a, a joy to drive.
Pretty amazing, pretty amazing how like the, there was no road and then like all of a sudden, all the streets were done in one day. It was awesome.
It was incredible.
It's.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
It's good work.
Okay, so just to be clear for us in the room here and the community. So we're talking about two different projects on Revere Street. There's the TIPS project and then there's the National Grid project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
National Grid's ongoing as we speak.
And that's, that's happening right now. I saw an alert or notification went out today about that. So can we maybe just talk about that project specifically? What the impacts are, what people can be, um, expecting? And then what the end result is gonna be, what the benefit to the town is? I'm hoping we're gonna get new sidewalks, new roads and, and maybe, and, you know, God willing, a crosswalk somewhere on that street as a result of this. Or can we just maybe talk about that, because that's happening right now?
Sure, sure. So I'll lead and then Steve can correct me. How's that? Director Calla can correct me. Um, so there's a two-year project.
Okay.
And, you know, we were trying to, to space them a little bit, but National Grid had needs. There's projects starting over in Wonderland and working their way into Winthrop. So it's bringing new electric lines underground into Agile Street. That's to help with failures that we see during the winter months, usually in the Metcalf Square area. Um, you know, they've failed many, on many occasions. So this will help support this substation here. Um, but this was a necessary upgrade, one, quite frankly, that we've been, after National Grid to correct some of the electrical failures here in Winthrop. Director Calla, I'll let him speak to sidewalks and streets because he was a bulldog with National Grid. Um, he's probably the least liked DBW director, um, because he's forced them to actually give us more than what they wanted to. Um, so I'll let Director Calla, um, speak on that.
Sure.
First, I just, uh, just go back to the project. Right, right now, Chief was right. It's, it's at least a two-year project, potentially into a third year. Uh, what they're doing right now, uh, and Chief was right, with, they're, they're upgrading the feeds to the, to the substation. What we have right now is direct burial cables, which is out of code. It's, they're not reliable. Um, so what they're doing in this phase of the project is they're setting vaults and they're setting conduit. Uh, but all those wires will remain live. Uh, after the, uh, all the conduit work involved are in, which is about a year to a year and a half process, they'll, they'll, uh, run new wires. Then they'll have to come back. They'll have to deactivate the direct burial and, uh, you know, liven up the, the new wires. So it's, it's a phased project. Um, we do have them now doing the, any areas that would impact our TIPS project. Because the projects will overlap.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, I, uh, I spent a lot of time going back and forth with National Grid. We wouldn't approve them. I wouldn't even let them come before you with the project, uh, until we got what we wanted. Uh, we're getting the full reclamation of the leg of Revere Street from the town line down to the Crest Ave lights where our TIPS project will end. Full reclaim means they'll pulverize the existing road. They'll grade it properly. They'll give us new binder, new, uh, new, uh, top coat. They'll make all the, which will give us more, better curb reveal. All the curbs will be ironed out, removed and reset, and, uh, all new sidewalks, both sides. So we will absolutely have the opportunity to put in the, the longer weighted crosswalk on, on that leg of Revere Street. Uh, I will say that we have to, um, it's, it's not as easy to say, we'll just put it at Bayou Street. I mean, if you, if you go over there, there's, people's front doors are at the back of the sidewalk. So we gotta do it in a way, you know, with line of sights work. And it works to the abudders to, to have that, that new, uh, that new crosswalk. And we can certainly talk about signage, maybe solar panels, you know, or whatever the case is. All that opportunity exists, but we will absolutely have a brand new corridor when the project is done. Now, that will come at the end of the project. And that's about three years out. But it'll complement what we've just done on the leg of Revere Street from McGee's Corner up to Crest Ave.
Thank you, Steve.
Just a quick follow-up. So will the electrical lines be underground now?
The electrical, that's, the lines are already underground, but they're direct burial.
Got it, okay.
Right, so, which is dangerous, but anybody that's doing utility work. We do water services. We're around, you know, the high voltage cables that are just laid in the ground. There was a time in, 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 in history where that was accepted. It's not accepted anymore. It's unreliable and it's very difficult, you know, to make the repairs.
Okay, and, sorry, one more question. While the street is open, so I remember a while back, and I don't remember the streets offhand, but we replaced water lines and gas lines, um, in that area and in that neighborhood. Are those new or old water? Like, how is that gonna?
We still have all the water mains in that leg of, of Revere Street. We still have all the water mains in the leg of Revere Street where the TIPS project's gonna be.
Yeah.
Uh, National Grid, we've got them, part of my negotiation was this project, they have to replace the old cast iron gas lines as well. Now, National Grid Gas and National Grid Electric, they don't, they're two separate entities.
Right.
They're the same, but they're different. They talk to each other like they're different companies. So that coordination effort was difficult. We got them to commit to it.
Okay.
Um, so during the process of them doing the electrical portion, when they're, when they're pulled out, because like Chief said, they got work to do and other communities coming to us, the gas company will, will be coordinated to be in there. So you'll see a fair amount of, of, of construction there. We've talked about traffic management, which the chief got involved with. And, um, if you remember the, the, the emergency sewer repair that we had last December, uh, we had a pretty good system. We were able to maintain a lane of traffic and we had a pretty good detour up through the Highlands area, which are all new streets now. It's even a little bit easier and, and better. Um, but I think that that, that worked out well.
Yeah, so the plan is outbound will be detoured up to the Highlands. Inbound will remain open on Revere Street at all times. There might be some times where we have to close both sides down. We had, that's happened recently. Um, that they had to put the vault in the middle of the street until they could place it in. So there was a couple hours where both, both sides had to be blocked. So we had to go up Dean, send cars up Dean and then send outbound around. So, but I said, we need to limit that. Um, they agreed to limit that. They, the traffic engineers meeting with me and Steve. Um, and they only wanted to give us one side of the sidewalk because that's only where they're working. They're not working on the other side. So they're like, we don't wanna give you both sides. But through Steve's, Steve's efforts, we got both sides. Thanks, Steve.
One, 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 one more thing.
Thanks, Steve.
Just, uh, one thing that I've received positive feedback on is for the center project, um, whether it's, uh, GIOSO or, um, Proco, Procopio. I think they have some sort of like community liaisons, some community contacts that both can reach out to directly. And, um, from what I've heard, um, that, that's gone pretty well. They've been pretty responsive. Are we gonna have something similar on the National Grid side? Are we gonna have something similar on the National Grid side so that, you know, neighbors in that area can coordinate or ask questions directly to National Grid? Because this is, you know, their project.
We just established that contact today. We were promised it.
Yeah.
We got it today, and...
So they're gonna be sending by Thursday to Larissa a two-week lookout. And that will have that information on there. They're also gonna have a live map that people can go on, so we'll link it to our accounts. People wanna see what's going on that day. They can just tap on the live map, and they'll show them where they're working so they can plan accordingly. I will then share that with the police department to push it out through their site and their Facebook page so people have an idea over the next two weeks what's my...
And who that contact is, if we can make sure folks have that.
That'll be posted on that.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Councilor Freeno?
Thank you, Council President. Chief, I wanna thank you and Steve for the progress on the lot behind the Methodist Church, the old Part of Public Works lot. It's been a process, I know, and you've been doing your due diligence. But it's needed, as you can see with the kids only. It's very busy back there now with the drop-offs and the pickups, which we were anticipating, and that's why we pursued it as much as we did, and I just wanna thank you guys. There's still some more to do. I know there's a couple of school buses back there.
That's the school, so I discussed that process with them today. They need to go to the school committee to surplus that, return it to the town, just like the buildings, and then the town can surplus them, and we can auction them. So there's a little bit of process there as well.
And I was wondering if there's been any other update on the clock tower of E.B. Newton?
So the specifications, the bid package is nearly complete. That will be, Richie Puny is working with Monica to get that into the central register and out to bid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. First, I just wanna ask the Interim Town Manager if he could do a review of all that was, everyone that was involved in containing the incident we had on June 26th, and for the council to issue citations to everyone involved. Obviously, Sergeant Batano, his actions were heroic and need to be formally recognized. So I would, as well as several others, I'm sure, so if we could have a list of people.
Sure. Deputy Chief's in Italy. He's on his way back, so once he gets back, I'll get a list to the council.
And a couple other...
And well-deserved vacation, by the way.
On the Revere Street, on the TIPS project, now that was supposed to start, you said, in the spring of '23?
They wanna put it out to bid in the spring of 2023 with an award. So the work probably won't start till the summer months. That's what's programmed in the TIP.
I guess my thought along around this and to try to be very proactive with it, going up Revere Street, obviously, is the entrance to Fort Banks School. And if we could get as much of that, you know, how they work it, so maybe through the summer months, because we're gonna have to figure out how that process is gonna work, and maybe we have an access by then. But just something to be on the radar, obviously, during the school year. And just on the Center Business District, I know they have been moving quicker, I guess, maybe is the word. But I know that there's language in the contract that they could only have so many feet of sidewalk open at a time. And there is much more sidewalks staying open for longer periods of time, which is more of a deterrent and a detriment to the town and liability issues and such. Can we just, you know, keep on top of them as much as we can? I know you guys have been, and it's good that they're working quicker, but they still have to maintain that, replacing the sidewalks.
Yes, and yes. Just so you know, it's a give-and-take. Any major project is give-and-take. So we added some stuff to their timeline that wasn't originally bidded. So we're working with them to make sure we put them back on schedule and keep them on schedule because some of it we own for the added additional work. We have discussed it with them. They've promised, and Steve, we'll keep watching it. But some of it is a little bit of a give-and-take and to, you know, I'd like all the sidewalks done and get them in like we promised people by December. That's my goal. And then come back and do your plantings in the spring like we promised people. So just trying to keep our promises, and sometimes we have to give a little bit more footage than people like. I understand your points.
And just one more quick thing, and back to Bob's comment on the grants and on the school. I think some of it is verbiage because when Steve was talking about grants and, you know, using the grants, I think of grants more as Title I grants that are helping a lot of the kids in school, whatever it might be. And I think you were just talking about grants in terms of like COVID money that's been coming in, I think. So I think there's a big distinction there between the grants that the schools are getting, and I think some of it is the verbiage and how it was presented because those Title I grants are extremely important and dependent upon for the schools.
And we have no say on them.
And we don't. And they could stop, they could come, they could go. But I mean, I don't think that is what Steve was talking about, and I think that's what I thought too when he initially, he was talking more about the opers money, not really opera for schools, but the COVID money from the schools and how we need to learn to live without it in a short period of time. So I do think Bob made a good comment, though, just a clarification. Counsel?
So over the summer, we did a walk-around with yourself and Director Callahan and a couple of others with, to go over some of the plantings that were gonna take place down in the Center Business District. And it sounds to me like the timeline might be getting pushed a little bit. I just wanted to know, so that I can communicate this to the community, what is the expectation if any of the plantings were to change from the original plans and what you would think the timeline would be on making those decisions if we needed to?
We're evaluating it now currently. I've asked Director Callahan to work with his group and send it to the landscape architect. Because going back through my notes and through the minutes of these meetings, there was a plan that was voted on with the architects. So I want to know from the architects, A, if we change it, is there a cost change? And B, if we change it to those, are those within the acceptable limits that the landscape architect told the council that would be best for that center project? So, you know, I think we spent $64,000 on that landscape architect, and I'm hesitant to just say yes and then have something come up that uprooted the sidewalk. So I asked Director Callahan to reach out. I will follow up with him in the morning. But that process is in place, working now. If they say, hey, listen, this is a major change, I have to come back before council. If it's not a major change and we're just swapping out a particular brand, I'm sorry, but not a... You know, a type?
Species.
A species, thank you, Steve. A species, then I don't think that's a major, major change to the actual project.
Okay. So just to follow up, so are we thinking that the plantings might actually happen after the New Year now?
I think the plantings are in the spring.
Yeah, I wouldn't recommend planting in the winter. I've tried that.
Okay. Everybody done? Good. We're moving on to the school committee report. The school committee met last night, October 4th, for 13 minutes. We never do that in the council. 13-minute meeting. It was fantastic. Tomorrow is an early release day for professional development. The team that's accrediting the school is in there. They started two days ago, and they're working on accreditation, which should not be a problem. We're all set. The school department needs crossing guards. So anybody out there looking for a job, apply. We need crossing guards to get the kids back at school safely. All right. And they announced two retirements of two ladies who have worked for the school department for combined, I think, well over 60 years. And they were Mara Sullivan and Marie Finn. So they were both retired as of this week. And they appointed Suzanne Swope to replace Tino Capabianco on the Shore Collaborative. And the meeting ended probably quicker than my report. Moving on. All business. Inspection services fees. Is there a motion? There's a motion. The town council adopt the new fee schedule for inspectional services department as presented in the attached memo or take any other action relative thereto.
I don't think we need to go through line by line. It's totally up to anybody.
No, there's a two-page report with fees. Everybody in the council has seen it. It's coming out of committee with a favorable recommendation. It is. Out of both committees with a favorable recommendation, so it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on. Move that the town council appropriate $90,000 from the fund balance reserve of overlay surplus account to assesses consulting line to cover the cost of reevaluation of personal and real property and to continue the Department of Revenue mandates and maximize discovery of new growth or take any other action relative thereto. This did come out of committee with positive recommendation. Coming out of committee with positive recommendation. It doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion on this motion for the $90,000? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye. I think we need a roll call.
Counselor Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counselor Placot?
Yes.
Counselor DiMarco?
Yes.
Counselor Luteri?
Yes.
Counsel Hone?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti?
Yes.
Counsel Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes.
Okay. Council President? The next motion is on the golf shed and dog park. Yes, there's an amended motion that the town council appropriates $71,000 from the below-listed accounts to a new special article for the purpose of funding the golf shed and dog park project or take any other action relative thereto, with the amendment being removing the $15,000 from town council reserve. That one line? Yes. And it did come out with positive recommendation on the amendment. All right, this came out of the committee with positive recommendation. It does not need a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Was that Counsel Luteri through the president? Was that a unanimous vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Hearing no other conversation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does that need a roll call? 71? 71, let's do a roll call.
Counsel Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counsel Placot?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Luteri?
Yes.
Counsel Hone?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti?
Yes.
Counsel Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes.
Motion carries. The last motion, Council President, is also amended. I moved that the town council appropriate $20,000 from the town manager permanent salary line, 51100, to a reserve special article for the purpose of search of a town manager or take any other action relative thereto. And that came out of committee? With a unanimous positive recommendation. Thank you. Therefore, it doesn't need a second. Is there any discussion? Counsel DiMarco?
Counsel President, if I may, Chief. So the $20,000 to start the search for a town manager, is there a firm that we have in mind for that, number one? And number two, is it a retained search, if there is? Or would it be a search where we would pay once they brought a candidate to us? I'm in staffing, so I kinda get in the game, yeah?
No, there's no one we have in mind. That's why we have the 30B process. It would be illegal to have another process. So 30Bs being followed in the procurement laws, we're putting it out there. We'll get companies to submit their proposals. We'll evaluate the proposals. We'll grade them, and then send them to procurement, and then the bids open. So we'll pay them upfront. That's part of them, the post, the job description, recruitment, and trying to get people here for interviews. So that get paid off.
So that would be a retained search, then, because we're paying them upfront? And then I assume there'd be a fee at the back end once?
Well, the $20,000 would be depending on the contract, $20,000. As Counsel Luteri has been, and Counsel President Boncori's been through this on many occasions. You know, if you have to go back out, then it's gonna be additional costs.
Yeah. And finally, is there any reason why this job isn't posted on our website right now? I mean, it's been six months. We should probably have it on our website.
So we always wait for it to go out to procurement. That'll be October 11th. And then we'll also take that RFP and post it on our website.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Just on that, just to follow up, I think in the past, I think the council president has the authority to... He has, or she, but in this case, he has to create a committee. And the committee will have influence on how the process is going. We're just allocating an amount. Could end up spending $5,000, could end up spending $30,000, depending if it's multiple searches or whatever. But I think the next step would be for the council president to name a formal committee.
All right. All those in favor of this motion for $20,000, signify by saying aye when your name is called.
Counsel Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counsel Placot?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Luteri?
Yes.
Counsel Hone?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti? Counsel Farino? Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncori?
Yes. Okay, I believe we're moving on to new business. And under new business, I'm gonna ask for a vote on the town council, from the town council on the Northeast Vocational Schools' funding request for a new school. Now, is this motion coming from you? I believe it says submitted by Interim Town Manager.
Yes, that motion for the negative vote is from me. Again, I just wanna, you know, if you allow me just a second, I'm not against the vocational school, bettering the vocational school. It just comes down to funding and numbers that I have to submit this motion.
There's a motion being submitted by Town Manager Talahan. And the motion states that the town council hereby expressly disapproves the $317,442... no. $317 million, $422,620 borrowing and debt authorized on September 9, 2021 by the Northeast Metropolitan and Regional Vocational School District Committee for the purpose of paying costs of designing, engineering, and construction and equipping the new Northeast Metropolitan and Regional Vocational School and related athletic fields. expressly does not authorize the payment of any share of the district's debt for this purpose or take any other action thereto. So the motion comes before us by the town council, by the town manager, who's asking us to disapprove this $317,422,620 borrowing debt. Is there anybody that wants to be heard on it?
So just one more time, administrative fleet, if we were to support this motion, it would automatically go up to a referenda for the town? And the second part of that question is, what are other communities in the Northeast Richmond-Palton Regional School District, how are they handling this? I think you had mentioned Chelsea last meeting, but, you know, any color there would be appreciated.
So yeah, so if we voted no, that would force them to a vote to have your vote here tonight overridden by the community, which possibly could happen. We're spending a lot of money. I know Karen's through a number out there. After the first two years, then it's about $435,000 a year. For the next 28 years, the first two years, you get a little bit of a discount until the full bond comes on, almost like what we saw here locally. So our vote tonight will force the issue, one vote of no forces the issue to a ballot question for all the communities. Stonemont accepted last night to support the Voke. Chelsea has voted against it in a very similar motion. And in fact, J. Ash sent me a letter and a copy of his motion. And Revere, I don't think, has taken an action yet. So Revere, Chelsea, Wobin, you know, their numbers are much higher. They have 153 kids each. We have about 57 kids here. So a lot of the smaller communities are voting to support it because it's small numbers for them. $435,000 additional dollars for me is not a small number. We're a small community.
For 28 years. Counsel Luteri? So, again, this is new business. Is it 60 days from September 9?
60 days from their vote.
Is that September 9? I mean, in the motion, it just says it was authorized on September 9.
Yes.
Yes. September 9, 2021 was their vote.
And like the chief said, I think it's well-wanted. It's deserved. I mean, the school needs to be updated. But I think people have to understand the cost too associated with it, like the chief said. It's, you know, right now, roughly, we pay about $850,000, $890,000, depending on the year and the amount of children. So this would increase that by, after the first couple of years, $400,000. Plus, what this will do, and I think it's warranted. I think they need a school. But what this also does is it's also increases, I think currently, the Voke has a little over 1,200 kids. This will increase their capacity to 1,600 kids. So that extra 400 would be, if it's based on similar numbers, similar percentages, we could have another 15 or 16 kids. And obviously, the per child kid, per pupil expenditure would probably go up as everybody else's does. Roughly, we spend about $16,500 per pupil. So if that goes up to 20... So, if that goes up to 20, for easy math, and we have an additional 20, 15 kids, so that's another 300 on top of the 430, on top of the 890 that we pay. So, you know, best estimates, I think the town's portion of money would go from roughly $850,900 to around 1.5. Not, and again, it's needed. It's, I mean, the facility is not good. We have, you know, a subpar facility that we have a beautiful muslin there now. It's fantastic, so. But I think it's important that everybody understands what you're voting or not voting.
Counsel Placot? Right, Counsel Placot?
Thank you, Council President. It's, isn't it my understanding that we have a waiting list of kids that want to go to the Voke?
Yes, it's the only vocational school right now with a waiting list is Northeastern Vocational School.
Okay, and that's our waiting list?
Well, it's everyone's waiting list, so we have a few kids on that waiting list as well, yes. And every year, it's a struggle, you know, some, we have always parents calling us, asking us to call the Voke to see what we can do to help their child in.
Counsel.
If we vote yes to pass this motion, goes on the ballot and gets defeated, does that mean we're out of the system?
No. No, so, right now, we're in the system.
Right.
If you vote no.
Well, when they build a new school?
And you go out there, we still responsible. So, six communities vote yes for this. We're still financially responsible, even if we voted no tonight, when they do a ballot initiative. So, the ballot initiative overrides Winthrop, and everyone else that voted no. If it's a yes vote on the ballot, we are left figuring out the finances of that, which would have to go then out to an override vote.
So, the ballot is for all the communities?
All the communities, 13 communities.
But Chelsea vote no, is there already a ballot?
There is, they like company. Certainly, you know, there is, and there was the same concerns from Tom Ambrosino, who I have a tremendous amount of respect for, saying it just comes down to finances, and how does he figure that out?
So, you're asking us to disapprove, so we would vote yes to disapprove, correct?
Yes.
You vote yes on the motion?
The motion is the council hereby expressly disapproves. So, if you vote yes?
Yes means no.
Disapprove. Okay, does everyone follow that? All right, motion has been?
She asked my question, so I'm good.
Made and seconded? Seconded, but?
Use my counsel privilege to put this off, it's coming under new business. Want counsel meeting?
All right, yeah, you can. And I wasn't sure that we had time, but it is September 9, so you can do this at the, at the Fall Forum. So, we'll have a quick meeting before the Fall Forum to take up these new business issues. Okay. I am going to send this to the Finance Committee. The next motion is a new fee schedule for the Treasury Department. I will send that to the Finance Committee. The next motion is to adopt a new fee schedule for the Assessing Department. And I believe that is coming from Matthew Papa? I believe, no, that's with this one, okay. And the next, and that is from the Assessing Department. I'm going to send that to Finance Committee as well. Okay? All right. I have some appointments that I'd like to make. And I'll pass the gavel.
Hey, excuse me, Mr. President? Should those both go to a joint, a joint committee? A joint meeting next week?
Robbie, you were talking about the Voke School?
No, the fees.
The fees.
The last fees went to the two, the two committees.
Okay.
Rules and ordinance, and finance.
There will be a violation changed?
Yes.
Those are those who are violation changed, okay. Yeah, I'll send, they'll go to a joint committee, then we'll have another joint meeting of Finance and Rules and Ordinance. Thank you, Rob. You're welcome, thank you, Rob. Okay. My first appointment is to the Board of Appeals, and I'm appointing Jamie Stern to the Board of Appeals. She has a master's from Rhode Island College, and she graduated from Tulane University, and she's working currently for Summit Healthcare. So, I'm appointing her to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. Jamie Stern's name has been put into nomination. Is there any discussion on the nomination? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel LaTerry?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti? Counsel Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have another appointment, and that is the appointment of Christopher A. Zeig to the Tree Committee. He works for IKEA, and he has educational background from Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, Wilkes University, University of Massachusetts graduate work, and UMass Certificate in Geographic Information and Technologies. He has been planning and doing work around one of the different areas. I've received about six emails asking me to represent him, to appoint him, so I'm appointing him to the Tree Committee.
Okay, the nomination has been made. Is there any discussion on the nomination? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel LaTerry?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti? Counsel Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, I'm going to appoint Lisa Plotnick to TSAC.
That name has been put into nomination, is there any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel LaTerry?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti? Counsel Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next issue, item on new business, thank you, is discussions about the town council meetings for November. Due to the election, we can't have a meeting on the 2nd, so I will entertain a motion. It's been suggested to me that we do the 7th instead of the 2nd, and continue our next meeting. Is there any discussion? I think we have, the next meeting is scheduled in November, the 2nd meeting, to honor Chief Linnigan, so I think we have to have that 2nd meeting as well.
So, that would be the 14th?
I think it's?
The 9th and the 23rd.
9th and the 23rd, yeah.
I'll make a motion to suspend council rules and move the November meetings to the 9th and the 23rd.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made in second to move the council meetings for November to the 9th and the 23rd. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Council, is there, can I ask the interim town manager, is there sufficient business that we would need the two meetings in November? Do you feel as a?
Well, in order to honor Chief Linnigan, he's going away, so he won't be back until November. At the beginning, I'm not sure exactly the exact date, so that'll be important.
Oh, it's incredibly important.
Thing to do, so I.
I was just, I just didn't know if you could meet, because that's also two days before Thanksgiving, if we can meet on the 16th and accomplish everything if the chief is available. But if, you know.
I'm available at the Wood of the Council.
Okay.
Okay.
Last meeting is a better for me.
I don't hear any amendment. So, all those in favor of the motion to move to the 9th and 23rd, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we need a roll call for this? I don't think so.
This is kind of the rules you do.
I am.
You want a roll call, all right.
Councilor Jarrow?
Yes.
Council Placot?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel LaTerry?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConti? Counsel Farino? Vice President Christopher?
Yes.
President Boncory?
No.
It's been a longstanding thing that I don't vote against the rules. Okay. Moving on. We have public comment again.
Oh, my goodness.
Steve, John, I'm going to call on you to talk about White Cane Month. Go ahead, might as well do it now.
Hi, good evening. My name is John Morgan, Precinct 4. I'm here tonight to mention that October is White Cane Awareness Month, and on Friday, October 15, is a White Cane Watch Party, which I asked that the information be on the town website and on CIT. I'm still waiting to hear back from the transcript, and I hope that each counselor got a copy of the information that I requested through the clerk's office.
I believe each counselor got it, John.
October 15, the Senior Center has graciously allowed for us to gather from 12 to 1 as a Zoom party. They call it a watch party. I find it unusual for blind people to watch a party, but. I'm also, would like to say that Mr. Jerry DeFraser has given me the, his complete backing on trying to fit his shoes and when it comes to matter for the blind. And even though Jerry's shoes are smaller than mine, it's still hard to fit. And again, I'd like to say thank you for that, and I hope there's a good attendance at the Senior Center on the 15th. Thank you.
Thank you. There will be an event at the Senior Center on the 15th for White Cane Day, so everybody's aware of it.
Oh, and thank you for Counselor Placot's suggestion for me publicly speaking.
Okay. Steve, did you have any hand up on the public comment?
I did, I did. So, as you continue to pursue the identification of funds to potentially engineer, construct that road, the access road behind the DPW building, I'd be irresponsible if I didn't ask you to add to that financial plan, a plan for the relocation of that space in the DPW yard. Not only going to affect DPW, which will be a major impact, taking about a third of that space, but it will, it will change how we utilize the fueling station for the town vehicles. Fire will not now be able to go around that salt shed. They'll be backing out onto Kennedy Drive with their big ladder trucks and engines, and it'll certainly change the way we fight snowstorms, the way we load our salters from the salt shed. So, it's a major impact on DPW operations, and we're going to have to relocate that property somewhere that's still operationally feasible. So, it's something that really needs to be considered with this, with this plan.
Hey, thank you, Steve. Charlie, did you have a hand up?
No, I did not, but thank you.
All right, see another hand up on TV?
Yes.
Who is this?
Marian.
Marian Reagan? Fiore, is that it?
Yes, yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, Marian, we can.
Thank you, I have a comment and a request, and I'll try to be brief. My comment is to acknowledge Counsel Christopher's advocacy on the CBD greenscape. He mentioned the walkthrough we did with a number of citizens earlier in the summer. I just wanted to mention it also included Town Manager DeLaHanti, DPW Director Calla, a couple of the construction company reps, a project engineer, and they spent at least an hour with all of us. So, wanted to note that and appreciate their time. I think it was productive and collectively, we identified some opportunities to add a few trees on Hagman Road, as well as consider alternative tree species that would be, you know, better as a long-term investment, in our opinion, to increase diversity to all the honey locusts, so they're not vulnerable to a single pest or disease, maximize how much air pollution we can get out of the air, and then maximize shade, so you offset some of the heat from all the hardscape. I was glad to hear tonight that these recommendations have been now submitted to the landscape architect for feasibility and cost analysis. I know the hope is that the landscape architect report will support implementing at least some of these recommendations, and that they are budget neutral. But here's my request part. In the event it is not budget neutral, my request is that the town council review it and consider a, you know, reasonable incremental cost, since these trees are a long-term investment with long-term impacts. So, I just wanted to put those thoughts out on the table, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Marian. Is there anyone else online? Anyone else from the Zoom call that would like to be heard on public comment? Seeing no hands, we will move on to public relations. And I think we've talked about the White Cane Day already. The Fall Forum will be held on the delivery of services by all our town departments. That's scheduled for October 19 at the Senior Center at 7:00 PM. We will be having a, a meeting, a short meeting, on these new proposals, and the Fall Forum will start at 7:00 PM. Okay? To Never Forget Garden. Rosemary Kelly has put this forward. We have a chapter of the Boston Tea Party who would like to come into Winthrop and present a plaque next to the library and make a garden, a Never Forget Garden, which honors all of the deceased veterans. This is a society that honors the tomb of the unknown soldier, and she, this is going to happen supposedly in the spring of 2022. It is not going to cost the town anything, but they are going to make a small garden area to the left of the steps, right where the memorial seems to be now. And they're putting up a little smaller memorial. So, everyone is aware of that. That may be coming down in the spring. Finally, there is a Fall Forum on the 17th of Fall Fair. Is that, at Parkson Rec?
That's been October 9.
October 9? Parkson Rec?
Yeah, it's just Saturday, October 9, Halloween, the 3.
Okay, and Winter Bikes is also having a bike parade Okay, and Winter Bikes is also having a bike parade with prizes and, and gifts and so on. Fun day for the kids, and that is October. Tracy, you're the judge of it, I heard.
Oh, shoot, I forget the date.
I, I think it's the Saturday.
The Saturday?
Yeah, I, I think so. No? The fourteenth? Hey, Julia's still online?
Oh, a friend.
Hi, do you have that? No. Okay, I received an email about it, but we'll get it into the town managers blog and online. But it, it may be the fourteenth. Okay, here we know of the business. I'll entertain.
Oh, it's, it's Saturday, October thirtieth. Is the Halloween Bike Ride?
The thirtieth.
Thirtieth?
Yes, sorry, at eleven AM.
At eleven AM to two.
Counsel Honan's the judge. You're the judge?
Yeah.
She is the judge, so.
Would my kids have a better chance if you had like twenty dollars in this hand?
Counsel President, two things, on the meeting at seven, are we having a council meeting at six-thirty? Or we having a council meeting at seven and then the forum?
We're planning six PM for the council meeting.
Okay.
Seven PM.
So if it's okay with Counselor Christopher, we'll have a five-thirty PM meeting, joint meeting with Finance and Rules and Ordinance, and also just under Public Relations. Is that okay?
Yeah.
It'll be at the Senior Center, the meeting also.
In the side room or wherever. It doesn't really, doesn't really. On October fifteenth, Friday night at four-thirty, the Millerfield Committee will be rededicating the William A. Miller Field, along with dedicating the Patricia McGee Track, and dedicating the Coach Tony Fusillo Fieldhouse. That will be at four-thirty. We welcome, we invite the public to come. It is a beautiful facility, long overdue in the rededication, but it is, it's almost time. And we encourage a lot of people to attend. It should be a great, relatively short event, followed by a great football game, so.
Which day is it?
October fifteenth, Friday night, Friday late afternoon, four-thirty. At Millerfield.
The veterans going to be rededicating.
Yep, there's going to be someone to speak on William A. Miller for the field, and for Mrs. McGee for the track, and for Coach Fusillo for the fieldhouse.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
Motion?
Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.